Everyone stand please. Yes, and yes, and yes, this Sullivan County Commission meeting is now open to its servants. Uncle Richard Venable presiding. Please remain standing.
Thank you. We welcome you all here tonight. We, I know we have some dignitaries and elected officials in the audience, and if I start naming, I miss some. So just let me thank you all for being here at our meeting, regular meeting, our special call meeting of Sullivan County Commission. Our first order of business is Commissioner Crawford, would you lead us in our invocation, please?
Let's bow with prayer, please. Father God, we are so grateful for the honor that we have to serve you, to be a servant that is pleasing to you in the work that we do. And Father, may we be conscious of that in the decisions that we make for our county. Thank you for the good health and bringing us here tonight. May all we do honor you, for it's in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Face the flag, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As I believe everyone knows, we're here tonight in special call meetings to consider the budget for Sullivan County in fiscal year 2021-22. We only have three resolutions, only two more. And we will take our time as needed to cover those fully. The next time we have on our agenda is to...
Okay, I hear you.
Is a roll call. Madam clerk, would you take the roll? Has everyone checked in? Madam clerk, check the roll.
Twenty-one present, three accent.
Thank you. Corrum does exist. Next on our agenda is the section of the agenda that we hear from the public, our public comment section. We had a sign up sheet on the table of Mr. Cross, if you would bring it forward. Our normal procedures are to allow three minutes per speaker and a total of thirty minutes for public comment. If you're making point, I'll let you go to the lumber. I won't cut you off in the middle of a sentence. If I do like that, just try to wrap it up and let's be cognizant of everybody's time and effort, but we want you to say what you want to say. So we will recess, open the public hearing, and the first person I have signed up is Timothy Dale. Mr. Dale, when you get to the microphone, you give us your name and address for our electronic records in only three minutes.
Thank you very much. My name is Timothy Dale. My address is sixteen forty-six Crescent Drive. I am a teacher in Sullivan County School System. I'm also the president of the Sullivan County Education Association. So I'm kind of speaking for the two hundred plus members of our association. We're just asking that the budget be fully funded, that it be passed, especially the school aspect of it. We would love to see the Sullivan County School System, salaries, facilities, infrastructure, be funded and made the best in the Tri-Cities. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
You said it well. Thank you. Thank you. I believe the next is Amara Little. And I hope I didn't butcher your name too badly.
Amy Little.
Amy, okay. I'm sorry. That's simple.
Three zero four Hines Oakley in Bristol, Tennessee.
Thank you, Ms. Little.
So I work for the Sullivan County Anti-Drug Coalition. Can you hear me?
Oh, we got you now.
I work for the Sullivan County Anti-Drug Coalition, and I work for the Criminal Justice Peer Recovery Project. So we, I work with folks who are in the jail who have substance use disorders to connect them to treatment and help them find a path to recovery. And I came today to talk about the jail. I know it, it needs to be. We need a new jail for a lot of reasons beyond overcrowding, outdated design, and lots of reasons. But that jail's been overcrowded since it was built pretty much in the late eighties, despite add-on and the workhouse and the extension. And we just filled it up. And my worry is that in ten years, looking at these questioner heads, wondering how we're gonna fit more people in the jail. And so definitely agree that the jail needs new facilities. But I hope, I hope that we can also be a little proactive and look maybe for some creative ways to help people recover and help people do what we want them to do in society. And a lot of that right now comes down to resources. There are, there are organizations and programs out there working to help rehabilitate people that are unemployed, help them find housing, because people do recover and communities do recover. But they need to be supportive in that. And so that's really all I wanted to say.
Well, thank you for sharing with us tonight the important work that you do. Thank you. Next up on the list is Councilman Vince Turner. Vince?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Vince Turner. I'm the Vice Mayor of Bristol. I am here tonight to address one issue, the education of our children.
We'll bring your hand, Vince, going off. There's wonderful sound system, and I don't talk loud enough, and their mics go off, but it's, other than that, it's good.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Oh, we got you now. Thank you, Vince.
Okay. As I was getting back to the education of our children, because I like to think of them as our future. We've heard a great deal about regional cooperation recently. The issue of funding the three school systems in Sullivan County is not in us versus them issue. We are all truly in this together. An issue that is important to each and every elected official in both county and city governments is economic development. In Bristol, we have diligently worked to develop infrastructure that is attractive for business development and expansion. Our efforts include a reliable municipal electric power system, high-speed ten gig broadband service, high-quality potable water service, routinely storing ninety-eight or above in sanitary service, and a sanitary sewer system with ample capacity to address industrial expansion. Services that utilize, that are utilized by and provided by both city and county residents and business. Our industrial properties available for development and expansion include Bristol Industrial Park, Bristol Business Park, Network Partnership Park Two, all with ample acreage for development. Bristol Kingsport and Johnson City, along with the counties of Sullivan and Washington, have made the financial commitment to provide funding for the aerospace park at Tri-Cities Airport. This infrastructure has the potential to set the region on a course for economic prosperity. We all know that a well-trained workforce may be our most challenging piece of the economic prosperity puzzle. Better education equals jobs, higher average household income, both of which equals new investment and overall improvement to our collective quality of life. In fact, our goal for decades has been to prepare and enable well-educated workforce that is desirable by outside investors. Reducing the investment in our students, our future, is counterproductive to these efforts. From my lifelong observation of elections, I've never heard a candidate say we're in favor of defunding our schools. In fact, it's the opposite candidates typically always claim education is their number one priority. We all know city residents and business pay both county and city property taxes. We are all truly invested in our future. The taxpayers, our constituents, elected officials, all of us together. The proposed budget for you tonight with the reduction in the general purpose school fund, property tax levy, will adversely impact our decades-long effort and will result in a ripple effect throughout every aspect of our county and cities for years to come. It is, in fact, a constitutional requirement in the state of Tennessee that we provide a quality-free education. We have an obligation, not only as elected officials, but as responsible stewards of this community and its future, to set our youth, our future, up for success. Raising them with dollars to fund their education does not move Sullivan County and its cities, cities forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I believe next up, we have Jill Harrison. Jill, it's been a few years since I've seen you here. Welcome. Give us your name and address, if you would.
Thank you. I've been here but not spoken. Jill Harrison, two zero four Cariselle Road, Bristol, Tennessee. Thank you for inviting me to speak to you. First of all, thank you for having supported us in the past. We appreciate it. Schools and funding up and down for new facilities we can put into place. I'm not going to get into talking about the cyclical nature of sales tax versus our property tax. The point that I would like to make, and I know if you're an educator, if you're related to an educator, if your child is an educator, you've probably heard of this, but there's an undeniable connection between literacy skills and incarceration rates. Incarceration rate is one of the reasons we're here, is to talk about increasing funding so that we can have them in jail. No issues about. I'm not getting it to that point. But depending on the studies that you've read, and I've read a lot of them the last few days, anywhere from sixty to seventy-five percent of our jail and prison inmates read at below a third or fourth grade level. And that may sound astonishing, but that's what the studies consistently have said. Northwestern University, National Education Association, and others. The lower the reading skills, the more likely a student is to drop out. In fact, as someone who is not reading on the third or fourth grade level, when they finish third or fourth grade, are four times more likely to drop out of school, four times. One out of ten young male high school students end up in jail, high school dropouts. One out of thirty-five high school young male graduates end up, that's a three-time increase in the rate between a high school dropout and somebody who graduates from high school. In the third year, we focus on it because that's the last year you're learning to read. From then on out, you're reading to learn. If you don't have that basic skill, you get frustrated, you get mad, you get angry. Sometimes you can't get the help that you need to go on to graduate from high school. So we have backed into that to try to find out where do we need to really put some assets and focus on it. Because of COVID in the past year, I know you've heard the studies, you've heard the information, there's been a lack of progress. And so that's our focus. That's what we're pushing on. And it's not just the academic progress. We're dealing with social issues. We're dealing with emotional issues. Children can't get food. I mean, the number of meals that we deliver, not just for city Bristol, but Kingsport and Sullivan County have incrementally gone up in the hundreds of percents. So to look at cutting the funding to the very entity that could help address that issue to increase literacy on students, which will then turn around and increase the amount of incarcerated individuals in our jails. So hopefully, going to what Ms. Little said, we won't have to be looking out of jail in another ten years because of what brought those rates down. So looking at funding and cutting it is contradictory to what we should really be trying to do for the students that are in our county. And Mayor Little, I'm going to close out by just saying that in this room tonight are a lot of faces that I recognize that are teachers in our school district, not just in Bristol, but in Kingsport and Sullivan County. If you don't just raise your hand, stand up if you're... These are your constituents. And they're here tonight because they care and because they recognize what funding can do for our students and then hopefully make our sheriff's job easier down the road so he doesn't have to deal with all these issues. Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
And the final name I have is Councilwoman Lee Power. Ms. Powers, good to see you tonight.
Good to see you. I'd first like to say how proud I am of Amy Little. She was Amy Rosenbaum in my fourth grade classroom. Amy has done an outstanding job, and she's a fabulous artist as well as a great social worker. So Amy, you made me very proud tonight. What I would like to say is just to reiterate briefly, but in a different context, we have over twenty-five hundred skilled labor jobs sitting on the sidelines in Bristol, Tennessee, and our area, somewhere in Virginia, but for the most part, here in Bristol, Tennessee, they are unsealed at the moment. Twenty-five hundred missed opportunities for productivity, twenty-five hundred missed opportunities for earned revenues, twenty-five hundred homeowners, perhaps. We're missing a real opportunity there. I sat next to a woman today who is the operational manager at the Fairfield Inn. They've had to close fifty percent of the hotel because they can't find workers. And not just day-to-day workers, but workers with a particular skill set. So when we look and when we talk or think about education, education is the key to everything that we have set ourselves up to do and to be successful in Sullivan County. Y'all have made a tremendous investment through the years. This is my eighth year in an elected role, and I have valued every year of it. And because I have worked in partnership with most all of you at some point in time or another, we've got to continue our partnership, especially in regard to education right now. We have the wind at our back. We know that we have prepared ourselves, and the mayor has been a part of this. Many of you as council officials have been a part of this. As Vice Mayor Turner said, our industrial parks are prime, our infrastructure is prime. We're working nationally to bring in businesses to be here. But we've heard over and over and over again, and we've missed out on one opportunity after another after another because there's a concern that we will not be able to fill the workforce scaled at different levels. Right now, I know Tennessee High will have over twenty different models of career technical education. I know the new high school that y'all have done such a fabulous job in building at Westridge will have, oh my, even more than that. And of course, DV has a tremendous CTE program along with the R-CAN in Kingsport. We have all of this in place, but to reduce the funding on any level at this juncture is to put us in a position of loss and damage. So I would encourage you, as you look at the budget, and trust me, our city staff starts working on the budget in November. They get a reprieve of about four or five months between when we pass the budget and when they begin working on the next one. Our next big discussion is on the tax rate. We've already begun to preliminary discuss that. It is not an easy task. No one wants to increase taxes by any means. You know, our constituency wants us to hold the line. But one thing that I've learned is that the best way to be able to reduce our tax rate is to increase our population through a valued workforce. The valued workforce comes in, they acquire homes, those homes provide us with property tax and with ongoing revenue streams through sales tax revenues. We know that those things in our budget that require year-over-year funding cannot be relied upon to be funded by sales tax. Sales tax can be a variable at best. We know that sales tax in a pandemic, how many of us held our breath last year from March until we began to climb back out in the fall? And so to be consistent in our funding with education, we have to have a consistent revenue stream, such as property tax. Hard decisions. You know, you're all sitting in a tough seat. I'm sitting in a tough seat, too. And so I look forward to hearing what your decision is as we move forward. But I will say this, in everything that we've looked at, in everything that we've talked about in our communications with the state, workforce development is key. And workforce development is best accomplished in our public schools. So I hope that you will consider maintaining a budget that fully funds our school systems. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Little. That completes our sign-up sheet. I will ask, I currently do, so I will ask tonight if anybody else that would like to address the commission tonight and during this public hearing. Seeing no one, the public hearing is closed. The next item on our agenda is all business. Yes, ma'am. We will recess. Yes, ma'am. Would you come to the cutting? Would you give us your name and address? And I don't believe you were here when I said we give our public three, three minutes, so.
Oh, I'm running a little bit late. Sorry, I'm tired. I didn't...
It's fine. It's fine. I'm glad, I'm glad we saw you.
Okay. They had the date wrong. The CYB announced it for July, by law. So anyway, to put a race on homeowners right now is bad time. I don't know what's been said before I got here, but I'm saying that y'all think that it's a good time because we had hardships, like y'all had. Well, we had to. This is not a good time to tax people because we're coming up front of the science for two. So with that in thought, as far as the teachers, I'm out of breath because the steps is still worse.
I understand. You take your time.
As far as the teachers and the schools needing money, hey, I don't know that. But now's not a good time for that either. The teachers have been off for a long time. So I don't know why would they would need money. They've been three months off in the summer, anyway. And our kids haven't went to school. Somebody's talking behind me. I don't know what it is, but that's fine.
With your own respect, our Speaker, please.
I'm sure they disagree with me, but the other subjects, tangents I'm not familiar with. But I know that there's debt that we have. We can make it up at some point. Now's not the time. You might get some money by cutting some of your stuff. Maybe some of the people on the commission even, the mayor, whoever, could take just a little bit of a cut on their salaries and not put this burden on their homeowners at this time. I mean, later, I guess so. But right now, I just can't see that. That's not fair. So just keeping that in mind. And of course, there's other things. I think there's money for the county jail. Actually, that's the only thing that I'm okay with. Because I keep up a little bit, and I do know that it's old and needs all the repairs. And that's right about the only thing that I'm comfortable with. But I don't see you having to pay the rent of rates or that one two or three. Like I say, I tell y'all never talk about y'all coming down. Cost of living, I understand. But I'm sure that we shouldn't be the only ones that take the cut. I appreciate it.
Ma'am, would you, I might have missed it. Would you give us your name and address for our...
I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Linda Smith, three fifty Boycraft in Buck Stadium.
Ms. Little, thank you for making the effort to come out tonight. Thank you. At my peril, I'm going to ask anyone else. Seeing I'm well clothed. Okay, I, um, you come forward. And while she's, while they're coming forward, is there anybody else? Do you come forward, and while she's, rather coming forward, is there anybody else?
I'll come forward, I'll come forward after her.
Okay, would you give us your name and address, please? We're, we're thumping up on thirty minutes for this public hearing, folks.
My name's Tina Boling, I live at one fifty-two Bullet Hollow Road, Bristol, Tennessee.
You're welcome, we give you three minutes.
I would just like to, I've wanted to say this forever and I'm about to throw up, but I went to college, like so many others did, I got a degree, a BS in K through three, which is kind of early through third grade. I went back and I got a degree in K through, in one through eight, so that I could teach the upper grades. And then eventually I went back and got my master's in K through twelve, so I've got the whole gamut. I have twenty-seven years teaching experience in Sullivan County schools. I'm not going to tell you my salary because I think some of you would fall over dead, someone with that many college degrees and that much education of what I make. My sister's daughter has been in Bristol City Schools, she's a wonderful teacher, she has one college degree, she's been there for six years and she makes just a few thousand dollars less than I do at this point in twenty-seven years with three college degrees. We don't get three months off in the summer, I know that a lot of people think that. It is a little bit less than two months now, I go back actually in July and I'm not paying for that.
You don't have to defend yourself, we're not going to put eight here, so that's fine.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And give us your name and address for our electronic president. Happy to have you.
Thanks, my name's Kevin Smith, I live on three oh four Boyd Road in Bluff City. That was my mother that just got popped in there a while ago.
Well, thank you, she did a good job.
I wish I could have got here earlier, I thought it was the same thing. And I actually work, you know, I'm working and you know, it's, it's hard to get off a new UPS drive. How many times has the county raised property taxes in the past ten years, assessments and everything else? Does anybody have an answer?
No, this is your time to talk.
Well, I mean, I'm just, I'm asking, I'm just asking a question.
Okay, rhetorical, go ahead.
Well, like my mother said, I don't see how we can keep raising property taxes and keep raising and keep raising and keep raising. You know, I don't know about the people behind me, I, you know, I respect them, I've got nothing, you know, they may be teachers and county workers and stuff like that, and I'm sure they need a raise, they want a raise and everything else. But where do we justify it? I mean, where does it, I mean, you know, as far as like, do we keep on taxing and taxing and taxing as far as like, you know, as far as we can go with it? You know, it's like she said, I mean, this area has been shut down, about like rest of the country over a pandemic, is what we're calling it. And from what I can gather, things is getting ready to start back up with a different variant. So I mean, are we going to shut down again, but raise property taxes up again, maybe people ain't working and stuff like that? I mean, you know, what about the people that's not here, what about the people that's actually, you know, that's working and can't get here to have their voice and stuff like that? All I'm asking is, is go back, look at the books, see what you can consider about cutting decides keep on raising taxes. We get to the point that you keep raising taxes around here and people ain't want to come here because it's going to be just as high as everywhere else around the country. That's all I got.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate you making the effort to come in. Anybody else? We've got a few minutes left in the, seeing I'm close to public hearing. And as I mentioned earlier, our next order of business is old business. And we have three resolutions on the agenda.
Item number one, Mr. King, you're recognized. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Where we get started on this? I've got a question that the budget committee never really did get answered. And I think it's very important, this budget, that we have this answered before we go on. And I'm going to ask Mr. Bailey, if he ever received a list of the one-time expenditures that totaled up to eight million dollars that we were supposed to get from the school department of Sullivan County? Did you ever get a list of those items?
Mr. King, that's a good question and I won't, I'm anxious for the answer. We're on item number one, would you, so that we can get in discussion, item number one, which is setting the fact rates, would you move introduction on that?
And I'm not trying to argue with you, but I don't see how we can move forward with any of this till we get those facts in figure.
Mr. Bailey, you're recognized. And we're not going to get into the part.
No, sir, I would not send a copy of that list.
But would it be, could we get a copy of those before we go on? Because I, again, I, I think this is very important to setting our budget and if we can't set our budget to what it needs to be, then I'm not comfortable of, you know, setting our tax rate. And if we can't get it, then I think we need to wait till we can get it. I'm sorry, but that, it's just, well, I feel we asked for this probably two weeks ago. And, you know, our, our budget committee, we asked for it and we haven't got it. So it, as far as I'm concerned, our, our budget process is incomplete, we have this. And we've come a long way from the time we started trying to do our budget till we can get to this point. And I'm not trying to be unreasonable, I know that, that we have worked on this, but there again, I think that at some point in time, we, we've got to have this and I think it needs to be before we, we go any further.
Mr. King, are you making a motion that this committee adjourn until next?
Yes, sir, I am.
If you have a second? That's a proper motion. I'm sorry, who seconded? Commissioner Stanley seconded. Now we'll have discussion on the motion. Okay, I have a list. Ms. Stanley, you're recognized.
Thank you, sir. That was one, that's the reason that I had pushed my button to speak is I do not think that this body is ready to vote on this budget when we just got papers laid here on our desk. The other budget that we had was line item by out, line item, and this budget isn't. So I don't feel comfortable right now going in and voting on a tax rate not knowing what I am voting for.
Ms. Stanley, do you have this copy?
I do, I just received.
That is line item by line item, but go ahead and make your point, that we have those people want to talk.
I've got a budget that is dated, sir, June the twenty-ninth, and then I, the one that I had had the last time was dated June the seventeenth.
And the changes, and the changes that you made, but go ahead, okay, you've made your point, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Glover, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The point that Commissioner King was making on the, on the eight point, I think it's a little over eight million dollars, it's about eight point eight million from what I understand. And I did find that in the, in the budget document here, and it's under. Give me one second, please. On page ten, if you'll look under general purpose school one forty-one, estimated beginning balance is ten million, six sixty-seven, eight seventy-seven, estimated revenue and other sources, eight million, nine sixty, twenty-five, transfers in from other funds, ten hundred thousand. Then we go over to appropriated expenditures and it says eighty-nine, nine fifty-nine, one oh two, and I think that's what Commissioner King is referring to. And I do remember, it was one two weeks ago, that that particular item was asked for in line items to, to explain to us what that money was going for and what it was going to. And I think that's, I think that's the information that we need before we move forward. I think the taxpayer of Sullivan County wants to be accountable for a little over eight million dollars here. So I think that's what we need to, to look for and have a, a list of items for that, if we could please. And second of all, item number three, that was handed to us, there just amended go resolutions appropriate fines for charitable civic organizations. Larry, I looked through this list and it basically all matches up with the other, what, what has been the amended amount on these.
And so while Mr. Bailey looks, I know there was a, an amendment recommended by the budget committee to change the budget to provide sixty thousand dollar funding for Bates Mountain Park, fifty thousand for Bristol and ten thousand for Bluff City, that's the amendment that you see or in the. Is that correct, Mr. Bailey? Okay?
Okay, and that's, that's what it is for the extra money for Kingsport.
Right, that was a recommendation by the budget committee.
And Bluff City's was added on as well, right? Bluff City's was added on as well from what I see here.
Recommendations, and that's what I have for you in that, a compilation of recommendations from the legislative executive.
But some of the questions I have is, is some of the amendments that's in here that we voted on through the process, a lot of them has been changed and a lot of them has been done and not, the executive committee and administrative committee, we worked really hard on moving this process forward. And the finance committee that we've had has worked really hard on moving this process forward. We've put many hours in. And if things like this continues, I don't see why we even need those committees. That's the point I'm making.
So this budget is a compilation of that work. What if we were to take a, about a fifteen minute recess here to, let's leave Mr. Robben speak if you don't care, okay? Mr. Robben, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm very sympathetic to Mr. King's request. Another problem is all the misinformation, you know, things, you know, I've overly heard the, the public comment about underfunding the system. The school systems have been overfunded for years, that's why the surplus was high. This year, the budget also funds over four hundred empty seats in addition to the empty seats we've already been funding. The system is not underfunded, it has been overfunded for years, that's why the surplus has grew. This past year in this budget, we paid seven point eight million for the facilities plan. And this past five years ago, the school system promised four million savings. If that was even close to being delivered, there would be no tax increase if the savings promised were delivered. That's not us, that's, a lot of the blame we get is not us. There, there's been multiple changes in the facilities plan, you know, we, we keep talking about the facilities closure saving money, but we're not seeing it. Come budget time, we're not seeing it. The teacher pay increase could very easily be handled with the student seats that we're paying for this year that no students are sitting in. If you look at this budget with the, the surplus that they're spending, it's simply not sustainable to keep up that behavior. Why would you want a budget that's not sustainable?
I don't want to be too.
I'm about that.
No, no, it's, it's all right, I, I just want to say we got a motion on the floor and I know this is speaking to that motion.
It is, yes.
To get that list, so I'm going to allow that, I've been, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. If you look at this budget, almost half of it, granted, there's some contributions being made, almost half of it goes to the school system. That gives you about sixty percent to run the entire county, everything. Think about that, folks, think about that. That's why we're having trouble paving roads, that's why we're having trouble getting police officers, folks putting their life on the line. You know, there's only one pie and everybody wants as much pie as they can get, we understand that. But we're put into a predicament as the last folks that just spoke said, we're facing an economic recovery after this COVID situation. There's a lot of businesses struggling, there's a lot of folks' business will not be open. And raising the property tax on those folks is irresponsible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robben, that, that concludes it. Any other discussion on the motion? And motion is, is that we, would you, would you repeat that motion we got?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn this meeting till we get the information that was asked for by the budget committee, asking for what was in that eight point five, eight point eight million dollar one-time expenditures, line item, we just want to live how it's going to be spent, because it's not only going to affect this, this budget, it's going to affect from now on. And that's the reason I think it's really important we get this, you know, this list of where we can see what, what we need to plan for in the future.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure the clerk got most of that. Before we have a vote, and I'm not going to ask you to amend your, your motion yet, before we have a vote, I think it would be beneficial to moving forward and doing what this commission is responsible for doing, for us to take a, a recess and I would ask you to stay close in the area, so we will reconvene at the call of the chair, we'll try to do this in twenty minutes and come back and vote on your motion, Mr. King. So without objection, as Mr. Glover suggested, we will recess.